The time is now 7:02 and I'm calling to order and reconvening to open session the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, February 11th, 2019. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrubus?
Here.
Mr. Razak?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Ms. Peel, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple Board salutes. Mrs. Grover, will you please lead us in the first Board salute?
The Board salutes nine District 204 students who were recently named U.S. Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Congratulations to the following Niqwa Valley students: Neil Pai, Brian Chu, Isha Sharma, Christopher Song, Hari Shridra, Jeffrey Tang, and Anuva Chandalia. And congratulations to Shruti Koli from Wobonzi Valley and Kathleen Pankow from Matea Valley. These students are recognized as some of the nation's most distinguished seniors. Congratulations to all on the stellar achievement.
Thank you. Mr. Rising?
The Board salutes Wobonzi Valley Science Teacher Sarah Young, who was recently awarded the Dorothy Stout Grant by the National Association of Geoscience Teachers. Sarah has worked at Wobonzi Valley for the past 12 years. She currently teaches Earth and Space Science, Environmental Earth Science, and AP Environmental Science. This award is part of the organization's ongoing efforts to raise the quality of teaching, the geosciences at all levels. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you. It's now time for our Student Representative Report. I don't know if Aria made it today. Arianna Lurie from Niqwa Valley High School, maybe the weather stopped. If he comes in later, we'll find some time in order for that to occur. We have no public comment for non-agenda or agenda items, so we will move to our Superintendent Report.
Okay. So tonight, we have some special guests that I'm going to ask to come up to the podium to speak. We have the authors of a recently published book entitled "Multi-tiered Systems of Support for Young Children: Driving Change in Early Education." So we have first, Dr. Robin Miller Young is from Northern Illinois University, and Dr. Judith Carter is coming from, all the way from the University of Kansas to be with us tonight. So they wanted a few minutes to talk about our district's involvement in some of their work. And I think, do we have it up? Oh, we do. Good.
It's my pleasure to come back to Indian Prairie, as I was a longtime employee here before moving on to Northern Illinois University, where I'm now an Assistant Professor of Early Childhood Education, preparing the next generation of exemplary leaders in our field. So I'm here, I had to be, was I raptured?
You had to be raptured.
Yeah. And I said, well, I was, I was raptured in Woodstock this morning. Can I be raptured again? And they said, if you consent to being raptured again, yes, you can come in and be on our, on our, so a new word for me, to be raptured. But we wanted this opportunity, and it worked out really well, that we were able to arrange with Dr. Karen Sullivan and with all of you here, to just take a brief moment to talk about what this topic of this book is, and how pleased we are with the coordination that we were able to do with our preschool. Having worked at our preschool for 20 years, I knew that we wanted to highlight and bring to other states and to bring to the national level the extremely high-quality work and effective instruction and programming that goes on at Prairie Children Preschool. And so, one of the things we want to share with you is this idea around what multi-tiered systems of support mean. What it means is that we take a look at how well schools are functioning through the principals and through things that occur at the building level, not just for early childhood at that classroom level or for individual children only. We certainly do care very deeply about what's going on at that classroom and individual child level. But the fact that we have principals who are now saying, in early childhood, we ought to be examining what kinds of practices are making a difference for young children. So Judy and I were pairing up, and she said, Robin, with your knowledge of what goes on at a high-quality blended early childhood special education preschool, can we do some work together? So do you want to speak briefly, Judy?
I want.
And then we'll get something for Karen here. She took a leap of faith with us to help us do something special a couple of years ago.
Well, thank you, Karen, and thank you, Board, for letting us share a few thoughts with you this evening. I really wanted to come here tonight to tell you what a gem you have in Prairie Children's Center. You know, they say that you, you can't be an expert unless you live 50 miles away or more, and I live 500 miles away, so that really makes me an expert, I guess. But I wanted to tell you just a little bit of a story. About 10 years ago, some colleagues and I from different universities were funded by the Federal Department of Education, the Institute on Education Sciences, to develop a national center for response to intervention in early childhood. And no one in the country at the time was doing this approach to, actually, what that means is finding children as early as possible and giving them the level of instructional support that they need. Before they, before we wait for them to fail, we find and give them support right while they're still in general education in the preschool classroom. And so, while for us as researchers, as academics, we were still at the conceptual stage, but I wanted to find out who around the country might be doing this approach to providing instructional support for young children. And I founded at Prairie Children's Center. It was one of the very few places in the country doing it. And so, I came and, and I learned kind of what was going on here and found out from the pioneers in this approach to early education what good, effective instruction is. And so, it's been great to come back now a third time to, to visit the preschool, and I, I'm as impressed as ever. And so, I just wanted to let you know what a gem you have in Prairie Children's Center.
So, one of the things we've completed is not only a book, and we have a copy of our book for Dr. Karen Sullivan, we also made instructional videos. And she was so kind to allow us into the school buildings about two and a half years ago. We came on a very, three, I think, hot summer, August days, and used one of the downstairs classrooms. So the work that we are going to be sharing around the country and even abroad, Judy and I did a webinar last week where we had people from Poland and Germany and Iran and Macedonia and multiple states. That work is going to be highlighted and illustrates what high-quality practices you have here at this preschool. And they, they started really more than 20 years ago. When Karen and I were both here, she took her first principalship as, at the preschool, and I was in a different classroom role.
Did you have to tell them how long ago that was?
It was, it was maybe five years ago. It was...
That's better, Robin.
See, I imagined that you'd had a certain year celebration of when that preschool opened downstairs, when this building opened. And so, I think it was very easy when, when Judy and I were trying to find a place where we could film our videos. I said, let me talk to Karen Sullivan. I think she'll work out for us to be here. And so, she did. She said, yes, you come, you know, these are the days that are available. We'll make sure that you're there. And I think one of the funny stories we heard today is that we even had to talk Donna Butts into not running the fan that day, because the fan was going to interfere with the sound audio. And it was like, okay, half the building is going to be way too warm, because Karen has allowed us to do this filming on the first floor, but she let that take place. So Karen, we've got a copy of our book for you, and we just want to say thank you. Karen also gave us consent to use some of the leadership documents that we have from the preschool when Luanne Shields was here. And Luanne operated our instructional leadership team. And Karen and Luanne very generously said we could use those documents in our Leadership Book chapter. So there'll be more about how to run a high-quality early childhood center in that book, as well as the effective classroom practices. So we thank you very much for your time and for allowing us to just let you know, as Judy said, what a gem you have here, that we can share this with more people than just those in our local community.
Would you introduce some of your actors? Because some of the actors are there in the audience.
Oh, yes, I beg your pardon. Yes, I'm still thinking about being raptured. And so I forgot that I have my colleagues here. So Kathleen Saplowski, Kathleen on the left is a speech and language pathologist at the preschool, and she pretended she was a speech and language pathologist on our video.
Typecasting there.
Yes. Tammy Kane seated in the middle. Tammy is one of our teachers in a blended early childhood special education, general education role downstairs in the classroom. And then Letitia Johnson seated to the right of her. Tia is also, Letitia is still an early childhood education, early childhood special education classroom teacher. In our videos, she takes on the role of a specialist for those who are dual language learners. So the others could not attend. But that was also very nice that we could have actors for our videos. The videos show problem solving. I think you have material on those in your packets. So we have these great videos that are not, are more than just me and Judy telling people about practices, but they can see problem solving as it really takes place in that, in the leadership team. So thank you for reminding me, Karen. Thank you very much. We hope you enjoy the book.
Thank you.
And when you, you know, when you have no public comment and you need something to fill your board time to watch the videos, yes, multi-tiered systems of support for young children. And so, our work goes forward. We are on a speaking tour. You, we have, I don't want to be too funny while I'm here, but we know we're now in that stage of moving and getting the word out about the great practices that take place here. So you'll be getting calls, I'm sure, from other people that want to visit.
And Robin and Judy, I just wanted to thank, oh, right here, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
I just wanted to, I wanted to thank you, because a lot of our community doesn't realize what a gem we have downstairs. And for you to see that and recognize that, and, you know, both my daughters went through the preschool and, and needed moderate to severe interventions and had IEPs. And there was nothing better than that team approach that has been fostered initially by Karen Sullivan, who started the preschool, and now Sally Osborne, and our teachers, and our speech and occupational and physical therapists all do an incredible job and work as a team, and it's just so amazing for our students. So thank you for helping us shed light on what a gem we have.
Glad to do it. Yes, we're very, very glad to come. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thanks so much for making the trip in this bad weather. And I, and I also want to reinforce what Mark said. Special thank you to that staff and all our staff, our teachers, our teacher assistants, our administrators, our students, our parents who work together to make sure that we have a great program. So thank you so much.
Okay, I have more. All right. So last Monday night, Board President Mike Razak and I held a meeting for all of the school board candidates running in the April election to share information about the district, as well as resources they might find helpful about the role of a school board member. So we want to remind the public that there are several candidate forums between now and the election. There are two in February that we want to highlight, one on Monday, February 25th, at 7:00 p.m. at Niqwa Valley High School, which is hosted by IPEA and IPCA, and the next night, Tuesday, February 26th, at 7:00 p.m., hosted by the Naperville Area Homeowners Confederation. So information about all of the candidate forums are available on our website, so we urge you to, to go there. On Wednesday night this week, Wednesday night, the Aurora Planning Commission will be asked to vote on the Route 59 corridor study comprehensive plan. We do plan to provide public comment that evening and highlight our areas of concern, including high-density residential developments and economic development incentives and how they will impact our school districts. So we will be there to lend the voice of District 204. Jay and I, along with several of our current board members, will be in Springfield in two weeks for the Alliance Leadership Summit to hear the latest information and to have an opportunity to talk to our legislators about issues that impact our school district. So we look forward to that. We want to thank all of our volunteers, and that includes Lori, I hear you were, you're helping out with our middle school robotics tournament this past weekend. Our elementary robotics tournament is scheduled for Saturday, February 23rd, at Skullen Middle School. And I heard today that we have something like 72 elementary teams competing.
Wow.
So if you have an opportunity to come out and see our youngest robotics teams, please, please do that.
Karen, what date is that again?
February 23rd, Saturday.
Thank you.
At Skullen. And finally, if you haven't noticed, because you're inside, but I think some of you came from outside, winter has been pretty busy this year. So we've already had four snow slash cold days, whatever you want to call them. So I, I do want to say that we are not going to ask the Board to revise this year's school calendar until we feel we are past the need for more weather days. However, I've been asked numerous times about whether or not we have to make up those days. So there's some urban legends out there, so I want to squelch those. Under the school code, we are required to make up those days. So they'll be added to the end of the school year. That's what those emergency days are that are at the end of the school year. I see how sad those teachers are there, over there looking at me now. So I think we're all hoping that that prediction of an early spring actually comes, but just want folks to know that we do have to make up those days. We have to make up to five up. After five, we can apply for what's called Act of God Days in the state of Illinois, believe it or not, but only when you get past five. So that's my report.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through K.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through K as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move to our action items. And the one action item we have is the approval of the Gift and Donation Report for First Semester 2018-19. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the Gifts and Donations Report, First Semester 2018-2019 as applied. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Good evening, Board members. The Teaching and Learning Department asks that you approve the Gifts and Donations Report from First Semester presented tonight. As you can see, we are extremely lucky. Our community is very generous and able to provide many opportunities and things for our students that we would not otherwise be able to do. Already, we've had over $500,000 worth of gifts and donations donated to our schools. Much of those first semester donations were for school startup kinds of activities and holiday gifts. So I'm here to entertain. Any questions, if you have any?
Questions, comments?
I just wanted to make a comment that it's so cool reading that thing. I mean, it really is. Because first of all, what our PTAs do for our schools is just absolutely phenomenal, you know?
Amazing.
From elementary all the way up to high school, and I don't even think a lot of parents realize what the PTAs actually do in the high school, but they do a ton of things, too. But, but just looking at that, of the donations of our community, from our businesses to our churches, our religious facilities, and especially the parents, you know, I noticed there was a fellow board member that made quite a few donations that were very nice to his schools, that his children attend. But, you know, it's just such wonderful looking at that and the community involvement that we get. And, you know, we always say that we would rather have an involved vocal community than a community that just sits back and doesn't get involved or speak up. And this is a testament to that. So I just thought it was great.
Absolutely. It's amazing support we have.
Anyone else? I guess I, the comment I would like to make also is, I echo what Mark says in terms of sense of community. I've been in the district for a while, and it's so nice that every once in a while, all of us sometimes need a helping hand, maybe to get through academics or to get through a financial situation. And I really see that over time, there's effort to help each other in this community when we need it, whether it's a school supply to get started in the school year, or maybe having a Christmas gift that might not be there. So again, thanks to our community who recognizes that we all need help at a specific time in our lives, and we give it to each other. So that's kind of nice, in a nice way. We finally give it to each other in a nice way. So I want to thank our community for that. Anyone else? Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now move to the discussion items. It is February, and Mr. Strang always joins us. Oh, we have Matt, too. And...
I'm on that interview.
And in February, to have our first budget forecast. Welcome.
Thank you, Board members. This is the first of several forecasts that we'll present to you throughout the spring. Again, I'd like to welcome Matt Shipley, who does a phenomenal job in the office. And he's worked on this forecast, as well as the site-based reporting that you'll hear about tonight. Tonight is the broad stroke, 40,000-foot view of our finances and some work regarding the Every Student Succeeds Act that you'll hear about tonight. And as the spring and summer start to come on, you'll be presented with even more detail. Tonight, we'll go over the operating and the non-operating funds, some of our revenue and expenditures, and our assumptions. We'll talk about evidence-based funding and what we're hearing from the state and where we're at with that and our future activities. On our operating funds, we put together a five-year forecast for you all, and we'll go through the assumptions that are in these five-year forecasts. But this will be the one time that we do the five-year, for the next forecast, we'll back it down to a three-year forecast. The further out you go, the less reliable everything is, because things change in the state of Illinois and in Springfield. But what you can see along the top is that our local, state, and federal revenue, our local revenue is by far the greatest revenue. You do see our revenue increasing over the course of those five years. We adjusted in the federal area for some of our grants on the federal side, so we picked up $1 million more there. And that's something that we've received in the last couple of years, so that adjustment's pretty accurate. On the state side, we've been very conservative with the evidence-based funding. We've, in fiscal year 19, picked up an extra $700,000 beyond the hold harmless amount. We moved that forward as the same amount, adjusted some of our grants. But in fiscal years 21, 22, 23, and 24, we added $800,000 each year as the possibility of additional evidence-based funding money. I think the likelihood of they stay with evidence-based funding, that the district receives more revenue from the state is very possible, because they're going to start to pay off some of the Tier One districts and need to put some of that money, more of that money, towards the Tier Two districts, which we are. On the salaries and expenditure side, salaries and benefits is by far our greatest expense. The others, all of the department budgets and the school budgets. You can see that in each of those five years, we've got a positive fund balance, and we've got excess in the budget that ranges between $3.5 million and $2 million. And we're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the work that's going on in the Superintendent's Cabinet to maybe take some of that money and address some of our evidence-based funding needs. The last thing that I'll show you is that we've got a fund balance to revenue ratio that's right around 32, and it's been that way for a decade. So we've been able to hold our fund balance to revenue ratio solid.
As Jay mentioned, with covering the operating funds, we do have two Donna operating funds that I'll quickly cover. These represent our bond and interest fund and our capital projects fund. Both these funds are entirely funded by local revenue, primarily property taxes that pay off the debt service fund. We do also receive a few developer contributions within the capital projects fund. So both these funds are entirely funded by local revenue. On the expenditure side, you'll see that the bond and interest payments stay pretty consistent, around $26.5 to $27 million. These payments are known payments based on the bonds that the district issued throughout the '90s and early 2000s to fund school funding. And those payments remain pretty consistent through the fiscal year 2027. The second portion in the capital projects fund, we do project spending about $2 million annually to support capital outlay. This is in addition to the capital outlay that we fund through our operations and maintenance fund. So this supplements the capital that we fund through our operating budget. So in general, we're projecting slight decreases as we do spend down that, that capital projects fund each year. One quick note on the other financing sources, you'll see we are projecting a $3.5 million payment in fiscal year 2020. That's the second and final payment on the sale of the Brock Brody property. And that's our final land sale as well. I know over the past couple of years, the Boards approved a couple of different land sales. Each of them had two to three payments associated with them, so it maybe got a little confusing tracking what payments were which and when they were going to be made. That is the last payment related to a land sale that, that we're putting towards capital projects. Back to the operating fund, this, this graph or chart just shows how revenue's broken down, and it really reiterates what Jay mentioned earlier, that we are heavily dependent on our property tax revenue, which is a local funding source. Even as we discuss the increase in state funds we've seen as a result of evidence-based funding, that still only represents 11% of our total funds received by the district. So this has stayed pretty consistent over the district's history. And again, even with the evidence-based funding, we're still heavily reliant on property taxes, which represent 78% of district revenues. On the expenditure side, again, pretty consistent between years, but salaries and employee benefits make up 75% of this five-year forecast. The remaining portion, 14% of purchased services is the next largest. That represents our three main outsourced contracts. We outsource our facilities maintenance to Aramark, food services outsourced to Organic Life, and then our transportation's provided by First Student. So as a district, we made the decision several years ago to outsource all these services. If these were housed in-house, those salary and benefits numbers would be even higher. But those are tracked as purchased services as opposed to, you know, internally having employees perform those services. The remaining expenditures, again, are supplies, materials, other objects, and then capital and non-capital. Again, we have capital coming out of both our operating budgets and the capital projects Just to briefly go through the expenditures and some of the assumptions we've made in this forecast, this year's actually been a relatively straightforward or easier year on the expenditure side, because we do have a lot of knowns within our expenditures. This is the, 2019 was the first of a four-year contract with both our IPA and IPCA unions. So we've been able to align three years' worth of data to existing union contracts. We've increased health benefits by 6% in the forecast, and that's consistent with our insurance experience. That's lower than current health insurance trends. The district's been fortunate that we've been proactive in really managing our healthcare plans and identifying some potential cost savings. Special education now of districts are becoming a larger portion of our budget, and we've increased that by 7% as part of this forecast. Just, we've seen an increase in students being served by those out-of-district services. We've increased the consumables or supplies and materials by the Consumer Price Index. We were fortunate for many years to, to be able to hold this spending low and kind of be on a zero-based budget for these expenditures. But as we have started to see some inflation over the past couple of years, we do feel it's necessary to increase these by CPI. Again, as mentioned, we have $7 million of operation and maintenance capital outlay in this budget. Combined with the $2 million in the capital projects fund, that represents $9 million of capital spending. And again, we're, we're able to tie that directly with the facilities plan that the Board was presented this fall. Our transportation purchase services continues to increase as well, and we've projected that to increase by 8%. That's in line with the second of a two-year agreement we've signed with First Student. Really, the two main unknowns that we've not addressed in this forecast, but we're still continuing to monitor are two potentially state mandates that as the legislature gets into session, we're regularly receiving updates on. The first is a pension cost shift. So as the Boards aware... The first is a pension cost shift. So as the board's aware, our pension liability is picked up by the state of Illinois. There's been talk over the past years to shift a portion of that responsibility onto the district. The full cost of a shift for the district would be about fourteen point eight million dollars. The second issue that I think's been gaining a lot of steam in Springfield and has been highlighted even as possibly one of the first initiatives that the state legislator's taking on is state minimum wage increases. So we've not built any factors into our forecast related to that, but we continue to monitor what a minimum wage increase would mean to the district.
Before Matt goes on, I just want to highlight that our health benefits are much lower in trend than what you would expect. And Mike Baker from Group Alternatives and I have decided to put in for, presenting at the Triple I Conference next year because of the huge savings that the district's received this last year. The other thing I would like to point out is the transportation purchase services increase of eight percent. As Ron Johnson and I have talked and worked with, looked at other districts, districts that have gone out to bid have seen increases as high as thirty percent. So in the next couple of months, we're going to be writing the board an update, kind of talking about some of the options for moving forward and how we can serve the district and try and keep those rates as low as possible. So we're putting that together. And we are anticipating quite an increase because it's difficult to find drivers now with the economy like it is.
What is the estimated cost of that minimum wage increase for the district?
The minimum wage increase, as it's currently presented, is pretty minimum and wouldn't hit us the first year. If they implemented the entire fifteen dollars, it would be a million five in expenses to the district just to bring those salaries up. And then probably about another million five to adjust the salaries that would be, those new people would be bumping into. So I think, you know, you're probably looking at a three million dollar increase.
Is that indication on the way that it's built now, or are you talking, is if the fifteen dollars?
If they implemented the fifteen dollars all at once.
Okay. So we'd see a little ease if they approve it and if it goes the way that planned.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the way they're phasing it in, the first year wouldn't touch many of our employees. It would just be a small number. Going to some of our assumptions, one of the major assumptions and something that has really helped the district in the most recent years is our new property. We bumped our, well, as you can see in the blue, you can see what our new property numbers are. And you can also see that as we've come out of the recession and as developments have started to spur, we've got a sixty-five million, a sixty million, and in the last year, eighty million dollars in new property. The fifty-five million dollars in nineteen and twenty is, again, a fairly conservative number, particularly with all of the new property that's proposed within the district. And then going out, it's conservative with forty-five million dollars. And when talking to the assessors, those seem like, you know, pretty reasonable and realistic numbers to hit. And we should probably exceed that and receive a little additional revenue. To put it in perspective, every ten million dollars in new property is about five hundred thousand dollars in revenue to the district. Existing EAV, these are homes that are already in the district. And as you know, existing EAV has an impact on our finances because as our property values go up, we have an opportunity to claim a little bit more in taxes. There was a point in time when our property values were declining over the Great Recession. And I shared with the board during that time that when you looked at Indian Prairie School District to other districts in Will and DuPage County, our property values declined, but they didn't decline as fast as other property values. And now, as the economy's turned around, our property values are starting to increase. So home values are increasing. And you can see that, you know, we had as high as four point seven, three point five, and three. So I think three and a half is a pretty conservative number going forward. When property values go up, and they go up higher than the Consumer Price Index, the tax rate drops, and you'll see that in the slide shortly. Total EAV, that's our existing property as well as the new property that's coming on. So when you look at the total percentage of EAV growth, when you combine both of those, you can see that we've had a pretty substantial growth of six, four, and four and a half percent. And going forward, you can see that we're over four percent in each of the next five years. So that's some pretty significant steady property value growth.
And with the growth that Jay's just gone through and we're forecasting, that would bring our total EAV steadily up over the next five years. So with the two thousand eighteen levy that was passed in December, we had about five point five billion in EAV across the district. Over the next five years with those four to five percent growth rates, that would steadily grow to six point eight billion in the 2023 levy year. Consumer Price Index is the other kind of main driver of what we're able to levy for the district. The two thousand eighteen Consumer Price Index has been recently released, and it came in at one point nine percent. So that'll be the Consumer Price Index that we use with the twenty nineteen levy next fall. As part of this forecast, we're projecting a two percent CPI over the next four years. So similar to our EAV changes, that number's pretty consistent with our prior three-years' experience. And that's consistent with what the Federal Reserve has stated is their target for short and long-term policy. So we feel pretty comfortable with the two percent Consumer Price Index.
Jay, or either, quick question, how does that one point nine compare with what we had anticipated previously?
Tenth of a percent is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue for the district. So it's really manageable in a budget that's our size. You know, when you put two percent in there in the housing market tanks and you get a point one, now you've got something that you've got to deal with. And that's what happened, I think, in two thousand and four or five, when we had a point one Consumer Price Index that came out of the blue. And that year, we cut twenty million dollars out of the budget.
So this final slide related to our EAVs and projected property tax levies going forward is the, how these assumptions would impact our tax rate. So again, the twenty eighteen levy was passed in December. And the total tax rate, both the non-capped rate and the capped rate, came to five point four three percent. Assuming these increases in EAV and that two percent CPI going forward, by 2023, we'd be able to bring our total tax rate below five percent. As you can see, we did reach a point in the twenty fourteen levy year where we were just over six percent. So that's a pretty significant decrease over the last nine years, albeit it's been a gradual step down each year.
We're getting to the point in the forecast, in a few years, we're going to have 2027 up there. And that's a significant year because that's when all of our bonds are paid off. And so that green will be gone, and that's going to be an opportunity for the district to think about doing things differently. First time in quite some time. This evidence-based funding graph, I thought that this was important because historically, you can see under the old foundation formula how we had a slow arch that was starting to then dip. And going forward into eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, we were going to be losing some revenue from the state, given the foundation formula. And then the evidence-based funding model was implemented. And immediately from the hold harmless, we picked up additional revenue. And then we received a little additional because of the money that they allocated for evidence-based funding. So you can see from seventeen to eighteen, that jump, the district was really moving in a different direction. And evidence-based funding came along and kind of was right there at the right time and helped. And then you can see in nineteen and twenty, what that eight hundred thousand dollars increase continues to be. And hopefully, as they continue to fund evidence-based funding and they fill up all of the buckets for tier one, more money comes to tier two. And we really start to pick up some steam. Just to put it in perspective, because I know I've talked to you a lot about tier one, tier two, tier three, and tier four districts, the wealthier districts. I just gave you a snapshot of some of the districts in DuPage County. Queen Bee Elementary School District is a tier-one district. And they receive more money than other districts because they're a tier-one district. They picked up a hundred and eighty-three dollars a student. West Chicago High School District and West Chicago Elementary School District are tier-one districts. And you can see that they picked up three hundred and sixty-one and four hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then you get to our district, and, you know, we're a tier-two district. So we did get more money, but it was twenty-eight dollars a student. So, I mean, it just kind of puts it in perspective. And when you think of Naperville two oh three, a district that's a tier-one district and could implement all of tier four, excuse me, tier four district, the wealthier of the districts, you can see that, you know, at this present point in time, they could implement all of the factors of the evidence-based funding, all of the elements, and have money left over. So their share, when they said everybody would get something, was a dollar a student.
So explain what the tiers are. Turn to me.
Tier, the tiers represent the characteristics of your school district. Essentially, they take a snapshot, a point in time, at two points during the school year, when they collect data on your students, and they collect data on your staff. And they look at where you're at in regards to the twenty-seven elements. What are your class sizes? What are your administrator-to-pupil ratios? How many people do you have serving, students who are English language learners or special needs or gifted? What types of supports do you have in place for all of those folks? What's your local capacity target? What's your ability locally to fund those elements? And then they apply all of that and say, you know what, for your school district, for the personality of your school district, you need, really should have X amount more assistant principals, X amount more LMC directors, class sizes that are a level that is different than yours. And they do a regional cost analysis to determine how many folks it would take and how much it would cost in your area to hire those folks to implement that. And they do the funding gap, how far away you are from being able to implement all of those things. If you are sixty percent or lower funding gap, you are a tier-one. If you are ninety percent, I believe it's ninety percent and below, you are tier-two. We are at seventy-nine percent, so we're a solid tier-two district. If you're between ninety and a hundred, you're a tier-three. And if you're over a hundred, you're a tier-one, which tier four. Please, I don't get, tier four. Matt's goofing with my mojo. So really, you know, those districts, there's districts out there that can implement all of those elements right off the get-go. And evidence-based funding was put into place because the goal is to get everybody up so that they can implement all of those elements. And, you know, this is, really, it's, you know, it's an equity question. Everything's not, doesn't, isn't equal to be equitable. You know, if you're downstate or you need more, you should get more. And that's what the funding was about, so that at some point, everybody implements all of those elements. What I'll share here is that, this is the
Oh, wait, can I ask?
Sure.
So we're at seventy-nine percent, and District two oh three is at a hundred and sixteen percent of evidence-based funding. So why do they even get a dollar?
I think, I think it's probably politics. To get it to pass, they wanted to make sure that everybody got something.
In the last report card, they were a hundred and seventeen percent. But I think it also goes back to that hold harmless thing, too, that they didn't want to punish districts.
Jay, without going too, too deep, we're in such close proximity to each other. Can you just share why there's, why there's that, a little bit about why there's that difference?
Yeah. This is the tale of two districts that I've done a few times. This, we, we don't have, locally, we don't have the property values per student like our neighbors do. We've got about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of property value per student. And I think they're up, you know, close to double that property value per student. So if you think of every dollar we collect in taxes for our kids, you know, that we spend, they get to spend more than that. They might get to spend, I know, I had it somewhere, I couldn't, but it's like a dollar thirty or a dollar forty on a student. So they have more money locally that they get to draw from. Their EAVs are almost equal to ours, total EAV. You know, Matt had that chart up here.
Five point five.
There. So there's total EAV. Their total EAV is very similar to ours, but they have almost half the kids.
And they have a lot more commercial as well. But then when you take that five point five billion of total EAV, you're dividing sixteen thousand kids into it versus twenty-eight thousand that we have. So that's, that's really where the disparity comes in, is the number of kids against the equalized assessed value.
And to run a balanced budget, then, when, you know, eighty percent of your budget's people, you gotta have, you gotta do less, more with less people. And that's why we're a tier-two district.
What, just one quick last thing. And can you share just a little, discuss just a little bit about, because one of the things that this talked about was resources that were, might be needed additionally. Can you just share a little bit about how we compare what our resources look like per, within our district versus other districts? Or what our, not versus other districts, what our resources look like specifically, staff administration, that type of thing?
We have very high class sizes. We have very high administrator, pupil-to-administrator ratios. Every two or three years, I contact Northern Illinois University, who collects that information, and they send it to me in an Excel. And I, you do a quick sort. And, you know, generally, out of the eight hundred and sixty school districts, we're in the bottom dozen or fifteen school districts when it comes to administrators carrying the load of students. We, you know, we just do more with less. I guess that's compared to our comparable districts.
So I guess one more thing, just to get to that hundred percent for Indian Prairie two oh four, when the legislature passed the bill, it made the assumption that they would need to appropriate minimally three hundred and fifty million per year over ten years. Is that correct? So somewhere down the road, we're not going to get to a hundred percent like tomorrow. We're about six to seven years out, eight years. More?
Yeah, there was a point in time, early, when evidence-based funding was really getting some funding. They wanted to put five hundred million dollars towards it and thought that that would get it done over ten years. And they cut it to three hundred and fifty million dollars. And some of the politics took fifty million dollars away for other projects. So it's really three hundred million, and it's going to take, it's going to take several, 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 several years, maybe fifteen or twenty years to get us there. If they can continue to maintain this. I've got to say, it's still much better than the foundation formula that we were under. We're in a much better shape.
Can you explain why the difference is so exorbitant between tier-one and tier-two when it comes to the numbers? Like, we have twenty-eight dollars, and West Chicago is four seventy-three.
The effort from the state is to fund the neediest schools first, to lift their boats up to the tier-two level. And then everybody, now you have three tiers. You have a tier-two, a tier-three, and a tier-four because tier-one's gone. And then to lift the boats of tier-two into tier-three, and then lift the boats of tier-three, which is everybody but tier-four, into tier-four, so we're all at the same level. So the goal is to, you know, kind of fill all those buckets so that we're all even. So they want to make sure that those neediest schools receive those resources the fastest.
So later on, when, say, tier-one is now all completed, now you're going to get to tier-two. But say, tier-one then gets, again, certain, it means more criteria. It gets, say, special needs kids or whatever. Do they then start to fill their bucket again?
That's a great question. So every year, how you get funded is matched up against the personalities of every other school district in the state. So if something catastrophic happens down south, or, you know, and they have a big change down there, you know, I don't know what would cause it, but the personality of those districts changed a lot, and their needs all of a sudden became greater, well, they're going to receive more of those funds. So it's not, you're always matching up who you are as a school district. And it's really taken us to be very thoughtful when we're looking at how we identify students in our IEP system and how we identify staff members. Because if a staff member's a part-time reading improvement teacher and how we identify staff members, because if a staff member's a part-time reading improvement teacher and a part-time classroom teacher, we wanna make sure we get that accurate, because the part-time reading teacher is worth, reading intervention teacher is worth more than the part-time classroom teacher. Because, because those kids that they're serving are, are different and have more points. So we, we really work with all the departments now to say, let's double and triple-check this before we submit it. And then we send it down. And then, you know, next year, we'll have to do it again. And if we have a new development, we have new kids, and, you know, if those kids come in and, and they, you know, change the flavor of the school district, the character of the school district, we might get a little bit more or might get a little bit less as we match up against other school districts.
Do we know what, what time of year that they kinda take that assessment, or like, sort of when that-
Yeah, it's in the fall, in March, November. And we just did it, just did it a week ago, in February, didn't it? Just, yeah, February second. And the fall is real interesting, because I'm really getting off on a tangent. I don't know who's winning the bet, how long I wanna be. We had, we test all of our ELL kids in the fall. And, you know, what we realized was, is that when we test them, and we start servicing them, but we don't enter them in the system right away, because there's just stacks of kids. And we had to bring in some retired staff to help us get them all in the system. So we were ready to get that stuff down, downstate and have those folks identified accurately.
Thank you. You have a few more slides there, huh?
Yes, sir. So, we've got, we've got anywhere from, you know, three and a half to two million dollars going out each of the years. And, and at some point in time, folks are gonna wanna know, what did you do with that evidence-based funding? What elements did you apply it to? And were you successful at it? So the superintendent's cabinet has been working to identify, what's the best way to spend the additional resources as they come to the district? And can we free up any more resources to apply them towards the evidence-based funding elements? So as these forecasts progress, we may be spending some of that excess down. We're gonna be watching what happens with minimum wage and pension reform and any other things that happen in Springfield. But we are gonna be coming to you and saying, you know, we think if we put some of this money towards some of these elements, we could see some real gains in the school district.
Is there any requirement from the state that we spend the state dollars on these items?
No.
So when you say, at some point in time, they might look at how we spent the money? We don't know, but we're kinda speculating, that they gave us this money thinking, these are the elements. And let us know later if you actually spent it on it. But they give us discretion to spend it how we wish?
That's correct.
Wait, can I clarify that? I, I thought there was some talk of monitoring how those dollars were spent and it wasn't going towards... Because I think what they were trying to prevent from is, is districts giving out large raises and actually, not that that wouldn't be helping the students, don't get me wrong, but putting it really in those, those, those bucket areas of evidence-based funding indicators.
They're gonna want it spent on the elements, of, of those elements there.
But you could make the argument that staff salaries is going towards a lot of those elements, so, yeah.
If you, if you're hiring more staff, your salary's gonna go up. If you're hiring more psychologists or, or special education staff with master's degrees and it's a little more costly, your salaries are gonna go up.
We, superintendents have had lots of discussions about this. And the feeling is that, the expectation is that districts need to be spending this money towards some of these evidence-based elements. That is exactly what the legislators are expecting. And there is talk of folks, you know, really wanting to know that that money is being spent wisely, which on the elements, they feel is, you know, a wise spend of those dollars. So we're having lots of discussions about, you know, superintendents having this discussions with their boards, who might want to spend the money in a different way, that this is really the way that we need to be spending any of the, any of those additional dollars so that we can say to our legislators, you know, where we've put the money and it's going toward those things that the research tells us will enhance student achievement.
So Jay, just one final question for me, that, and I'd talk to you a little bit about this. Is this, with the special education out-of-district tuition increase that we've seen, and, and you kind of already touched on the transportation, i- is that a trend we can expect to see in those two elements kinda going forward, just with what's all entailed within those elements? I mean-
I, I can tell you that out-of-district tuition has gone up pretty, pretty steadily at about seven percent. Part of that is, you know, just the, the cost of serving those kids goes up. Those are different placements. Even when we work real hard to, you know, make sure that we, or, or it's a year where we don't have to outplace as many kids. Recently, we've put, had more kids going out than the last few years. If we build some program, program changes here that work, those numbers may come down. And if they come down, that's great, but we might have to spend a little bit more at a site in the school district to, to serve them here. It's, and I can tell you, it's, our numbers are better than our comparable district's numbers.
Well, and you already said transportation too, our, our numbers.
Yeah, alright. When I first got into this role and I saw our out-of-school district tuition numbers, I was like, holy moly, and had a lot of good conversations with our comparable districts. And then I went, oh, I got nothing to complain about. So, this is our first forecast. We'll continue to monitor our assumptions. We actually have a unit meeting on the twenty-second. So we'll be talking with our comparable districts about where, where they're at, where their forecasts and what their assumptions are, what they're hearing from Springfield and their folks, and make adjustments that seem appropriate. We're gonna continue to work with the superintendent's cabinet, who's, you know, she's, she's given us a couple of opportunities to meet and discuss options. And we'll be, at some point, talking to you about some possible solutions and looking for your support on implementing some evidence-based funding elements. We'll be back in front of the board. And this year, last year, we, we moved the budget up. This year, I'm thinking we're gonna put the budget back on a tentative budget in July, first draft budget in July, a tentative budget in August, and, and ask for a budget approval in September. So we'll have a good portion of time through the spring and summer to really make sure everything's known before we ask for approval.
Other comments or questions? Jay, we used to monitor property tax freeze, the potential for that. Where are we with that?
I've not heard anything coming out of Springfield about property tax freeze at this point, Mr. Razak.
Maybe I should.
There's a number of bills that- I mean, there's, there's at least four bills, but whether they're, yeah. So, I mean, there, there's still a proposal, but a bill's just a bill, so.
Thank you. We have another report from our Dynamic Dual. The Edge, Every Student Succeed Act has some new reporting initiatives in terms of site-based financial reporting. I think you guys are going to give us a report on that.
Yes, we are. Let, let me start. The, when this bill passed in two thousand and fifteen, I thought, how long do I have to retire? And then I thought, wait a minute, Matt's really smart, let's give this project to Matt. And he and Carrie Beth Harry from Human Resources Department really took this on as a project and did a phenomenal job with it. So we're gonna go, again, this is very high-level, and you're gonna hear more about this, and you're gonna hear, you know, this is gonna become very much like the forecast, where you'll, you know, you'll hear it multiple times a year and kinda go, okay, I get it. But we're gonna go through some of the data that we've collected to this point. And this is also gonna be a discussion when we meet with our comparable districts in, next week, or the week after. So, Every Student Succeeds Act is the reauthorization of the Elementary Secondary Education Act. And it happened in two thousand and fifteen. And basically, it's an, it's an equity act, it's a transparency act. There was some belief that schools of more need were not getting the resources that they needed. And that, you know, schools that were wealthier or didn't have as much need were getting more of the resources. And so they wanted to really figure out, where were you spending your money? Were you spending it equitably? Were you spending it evenly? And if not, was there a story behind it that made sense? So you really had to break down all of your accounts so that you could assign them to a school. And then in this year, this year's the first year that we'll have to report on, and we'll report on it in the fall of next school year. Dr. Sullivan was pretty anxious to see how we, we mapped this out. Checked on us regularly about the progress of this work. And I checked on Matt regularly about the progress, and they really did some great work. And quite frankly, we're ahead of our comparable districts, and Matt's gonna be the show when we do meet with them, because they wanna see how well we did. So, essentially, the cost per pupil calculation is your site-level cost. Who are the folks that are in that building working? What is the budget that you give that school to, to work with? And then the shared site costs or all the other costs that are larger. The site level, the, the salaries and benefits was pretty specific. The shared level, we had a little discretion to decide, how do you wanna apply those expenses across the district? And, and we met with the unit group a year ago and said, how, how do we wanna do this? Let's do it together. So when we're meeting as school districts and we're looking at each other's data, we're comparing apples to apples. So that's, that, that is good. So that we, we're assigning buses by the transportation routes. We're trying, assigning Todd's work by square footage. All of our high schools are pretty close. Some of our elementary's a little different. The two designs of our middle schools are, are much different, so there's, the square footage is different than that. And you divide it by the students, and you come up with a dollar amount that is getting expended at each of those schools. The concern, and, and Matt'll share it with you, is, is, was, you know, what do you, what if you do, and you see a big shift or something that's really out of the ordinary? And we were really pleased with five months' worth of data that, you know, you've got some variances, but all of them can be explained and all of them make perfect sense. So there, there's not a real story for our school district at this point in time.
So before we start looking at some school-specific reports, and we have a few examples for you this evening, just wanted to quickly cover what the implementation process was and some of our, our thoughts in preparing for this project. So first, as Jay mentioned, this was a pretty significant implementation for us. And we really began about this time a year ago to, to start thinking about how we're gonna report this information and how we're going to, gonna attack this project. The focus, which really, as Jay mentioned, really started with the superintendent, was to be proactive on this and to focus not just on compliance, but really trying to adopt some best practices and really think critically about what doesn't just match the letter of the law, but also the spirit of the law. As Jay mentioned, this was part of the, the Education Reauthorization Act. So this site-based reporting component was built into about a four-hundred-and-fifty-page bill. The actual legislation on the site-based component was just over a paragraph long. So there really wasn't a lot of guidance to come out of the initial federal bill. The state then took that and, and really last winter started to, to apply some, some of the state's thoughts and some of the state's regulations to that. This is, I think, really surprising to, to me and probably to this group. The State of Illinois was actually a leader on this initiative. So we're a little bit fortunate, the State of Illinois was, was further along than other states on this. But just given that there really wasn't a lot in the initial bill, there was some interpretation and some, some real thought that had to, had to go into how to, to apply this. As Jay mentioned, we did work pretty closely with our unit group to think through some consistent practices and some allocation methods that probably made sense for larger unit districts such as us. We also use this as an opportunity to really renew the focus across the district on important and accurate and timely reporting. So I, I gotta give a lot of credit to our, to our principals and their staff that really embraced this as an opportunity to, to kinda clean up some of our other practices as well. And as we start going into this year's budget cycle, I think we've kinda warned them that, you know, we're gonna kinda continue to do this and continue to take a real close look at, at some of our practices. The biggest area for us was really a re-review and, and a lot of reclassification over our payroll work. So we really never thought of our employees when it came to recording their salaries and benefits as site-based employees. So we were really recording all that at just a district level. So that, as Jay mentioned, this is where we really got HR involved and really had to work through setting up some new accounts and, and just thinking through how expenditures are coded. Getting back to kinda the, trying to be proactive and focus on best practices, part of this is when we did that, we also took into account evidence-based funding. So that as we start tracking our, our employees and our salary expense and, and how we're allocating people, we're gonna meet the, a lot of the site-based reporting requirements, but we think we've also built in a lot of good information we'll be able to, to use for evidence-based funding reporting as well. And the final point that, again, Jay hit on briefly, but, you know, we're kind of at the point now where we're really trying to work through how to communicate some of our differences and communicate our story across, across a wide variety of stakeholders with this information. So one of the limitations of the bill is that this information's reported on the school report card kinda by itself. So it's not gonna be reported with comparable information or district averages or any demographic information. And there's, there's really gonna be not a lot of context provided for it. So what we're gonna go into now is, is really showing what we've started to envision as, as the context and the story behind some of this site-based reporting. So I'm gonna start, I have three schools total that we're gonna kinda walk through. What we're seeing is kinda their estimated year-end expense per student at that building. We're gonna kinda compare it to the district average and, and talk through the story now. Again, with the caveat, it is kind of a halfway through the year. So we're using December actual information on, on these, combined with some budget or our best guess for, to fill in the second half of that year. So the first school that we have as an example is Biltah Elementary School. And I'll start with kinda the top, top couple lines here in the, the colors. That's really just the required information. So under the law, you're required to break the expenditures between site level and then their centralized expense allocation. And then you're also required to show what was spent with federal funds versus state and local. One area where the state's actually provided a lot of flexibility is combining state and local. They had the option to break those out, but that doesn't really align with how the state funds education. So within Illinois, those are combined, but there may be other states where those are separate categories. So as you can see for Biltah, if you, if you go all the way to the right in the blue, Biltah's cost per student is, we're estimating is about fourteen-thousand-three-hundred per student. That's the highest of our elementary schools and compares to an elementary average of about eleven thousand. So, again, all that's required under the law would just be that, that number, those, those kinda subtotals of numbers. But what we've provided and what this kinda second half of this slide shows is, is what we consider to be the, the important drivers or the story behind that data. So, as you know, Biltah Elementary School's one of our elementary schools in the south portion of the district, and it has one of our lowest enrollments. So we've highlighted on here that Biltah's total enrollment is three-hundred-and-forty-two students, compared to an elementary average of five-hundred-and-thirty or so. So it's almost two-hundred students below our average elementary enrollment. As a result, that kind of increases costs in two ways. So the, the first way, and we've highlighted the building's square footage per student, is when we talk about a lot of overhead sort of costs, whether that's building maintenance or just the administration of the building, that's gonna see a higher cost per student just because there's less students. So similar to the EAV conversation we have with the building, we're just dividing by a lower number at that building. But the second way it impacts, it's, and this is really the, the main part of Biltah's story, is that because we have some excess capacity in that building based on the natural enrollment, as a district, we've put a lot of special education programs in that bill, in that building. So when you look at the percentage of students on IEPs at Biltah, the percentage is sixteen-point-seven percent compared to eleven percent for our elementary average. Specifically with self-contained programs, if we spread our self-contained students evenly across the district, every elementary school would have about seven students. Right now at Biltah, we have twenty-six self-contained students. So those are students that are, require a smaller class size, some significant aides within that classroom. All that adds to that cost per student and, and ultimately is what's driving that Biltah number above fourteen thousand. You'll see, when we talk about the staffing that's required in some of those programs, we have a student-per-FTE number on this report, and at Biltah, that number's just over six. Again, that's well below the, the average across all the elementary schools. So overall, I, I think, as, as Jay mentioned, we, we do have a variance here. We have a school that's significantly larger than some of our, our elementary school average. But, you know, when we look at some of the supporting data and the characteristics of that school, I think we- that school, I think we've demonstrated that the reason behind that is valid and demonstrates equity with the needs of the students. So the next slide then, this is again a draft and just information through December, but this is looking at all our elementary schools compared to what the average would be, which is that black line. And just, you know, kind of eyeballing the schools that are above average, they tend to have a story similar to Biltah. Graham Elementary School is another one that's serving a lot of self-contained programs just because of some excess building capacity. We have our Title I schools that are also generally above that line as well. So as we kind of work through this exercise on a school-by-school basis, we're starting to see pretty consistent patterns and I think a pretty good reasoning for some of those So I'm going to move on. Our second example then is one of our middle schools, which is still middle school. And Still has a pretty similar story to Biltah. You'll see the average or the estimated expense per student of $13,400 at Still compared to our middle school of average of just over 12. That represents our highest of the seven middle schools as we're projecting them. So again, a similar story to Biltah, Still is our lowest enrollment of our seven middle schools. As a result, we were serving some of our special needs populations there. We have 15 students at that school that are served by self-contained programs. The one piece that's still, that's kind of unique to Still or a little different than the Biltah story is that average teacher salary number that's highlighted there. So Biltah actually has the highest average teacher salary of our seven middle schools.
Still does.
Sorry. Still has the highest of the average salary.
No, I'm messing with your mojo.
Yeah. Sorry. Even we can get a little cross-eyed looking at all these numbers, I guess. But well, that number, just to put in context, is about two years' average salary on our current salary schedule. So it's not an overwhelming difference compared to our other middle schools, but it is enough to drive some of these differences. And I think what we're going to see is, given the district's growth that happened in the mid to late 90s, early 2000s, we do see some variances in the salary amount just based on how those schools were staffed when they started.
Is it blaming the first principal, I believe?
Yeah, some of these schools, you know, had an inspirational leader with a full head of hair come in and hire a great initial staff that has managed to stay through the district for 20-plus years now and are now some of our most senior staff. So we do see some of that variance in the schools. Again, not significant, about a year or two of experience across our schools, but it is enough to impact some of these cost-per-student numbers. One point to just point out, again, looking at our seven middle schools, is as our schools get larger, so when we get to the middle schools and high schools, that variance also starts to shrink too. So as we start kind of seeing a lot of the diversity or the uniqueness of the buildings kind of get teased out as the buildings get larger, we start bringing these numbers closer together. So our range on our middle schools is a lot closer than it was on the elementaries. Again, Still represented the outlier and it was about $1,400 above average, whereas Biltah was almost $3,300 above average on the elementary school data. So finally, we just wanted to close showing one of our high schools. Again, on the draft information, you're seeing a tighter range. So this is Matea and it's our lowest of the three high schools and it's about $500 lower. The other two high schools actually come in almost identical. So Matea, kind of an opposite story from what we just went through with Still. Matea's at our highest capacity, so they're actually operating kind of at the lowest cost per student on some of that administrative overhead or on that operations and maintenance. So that's that building square footage number that we have highlighted down there. And then on the teacher's salary, because it's the newest high school, and when we staffed that high school, it would have been staffed with a relatively younger set of teachers, that is our lowest average salary across our three high schools. Again, similar to Still, it's only a year or two outside of the range, but that is enough to, you know, cause a little bit of a variance compared to the other two high schools. Again, just showing the high schools, again, with just three, the graph's getting a little smaller, but that range has tightened up. And again, Wabonzi and Nikor are just over that average and Matea's kind of just below it.
So as we move forward with this, we're going to be working with the Communications Department and the Leadership Services Department to put some context to the numbers so that, you know, when it goes up on the school report card or goes up on each of the school's websites, there's some clear information on why the numbers are different. Because they can be different and be perfectly appropriate. That's again, that, you know, equity isn't equal. And I think that, you know, when the bill was written, that, you know, schools that had the need didn't have the teachers that wanted to serve them, that story is just the opposite here. And any of our schools that have a greater need, we put the resources towards those schools. So it's been really great work that these guys have taken on and, you know, any worry that we had, any real strange outliers, I don't think is going to come to fruition.
Can I ask, you did this for every school? So just so I understand, if you take the number of kids at Matea, it's about 11,500, and you multiply, sorry, the kid, per student, 11,500, and they're about 3,000 kids, you multiply that and you do that for every school, do you get to the 340,000 expenditure?
Yes, you do, with a few exceptions. There are some expenditures that under the state guidance are excluded from this. Most significantly would be our capital outlay and our bond and interest. So those numbers aren't going to be assigned as part of this site-based numbers, but otherwise it should tie to the total expenditures. And we've been pretty thorough in making sure that when we're doing these practices, they are, so.
We picked the three largest outliers, which aren't that bad, just because we thought it'd be the easiest story to identify. When you start to get in there and you start to see the schools that are pretty even, you know, it's going to be, you're really going to have to dig into the data to say, why is there a $50 or $60 or $70 difference between these schools? You might not be able to find it.
Thank you for putting this together. I mean, I know it wasn't pleasant and it's a mandate that we have to meet, so I can only imagine how much work this was. But I do think that the communication around this is incredibly important because people will quickly look at some of this stuff and go, oh, I want my kid to go to Biltah because it's 14,000, whatever, their spending per student versus nine and a half at Peterson. And we got to make sure that it's really presented.
Peterson's crowded and Biltah's not.
I mean, people, you know, they grab numbers and run with it, yeah. So I think that's going to be a very critical piece of making sure this is done correctly. And my other question is, is this automated at all going forward or is it going to be as massive as the first time through?
Yeah, we've been fortunate. We've worked with Forecast Five Analytics that's actually based here in Naperville and has a long history with the district. I think we were, if not their first client, very close.
First.
And they've helped a lot with the implementation and have started to work on building programs that automate pieces of it. And they're, again, they've gone from us being their first client to one of the leaders nationwide on budget and analytics and forecasting with districts. So we've been fortunate to really utilize that and lever that relationship. And it's been good because our focus then, it's taken a lot of the focus off of a lot of the mechanics and, you know, compiling the data and really on the communication piece. So we've been fortunate in that respect.
Because you're obligated to report this yearly, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
The other thing I think a number of us were questioning or whatever is, you know, is there something jumping out at us to tell us, like, we should react and do something? And right now, we're still looking at it, but nothing appears to be jumping out, so.
No. If we could, if there was numbers that we couldn't figure out why, or if we figured out why and it doesn't make sense to us, we would address it, but that hasn't been the case yet. And then that's a great thing. I think the majority of the work was assigning all the accounts and getting those aligned properly. Now annually, we're just going to have to work with the buildings to make sure that they, you know, put their eyes to it and make sure that what we believe, you know, folks are scheduled into their buildings doing, they confirm.
Jay? I'm sorry. The bottom part, the data, were those specifics designated by the state that we needed to include or did we pull those out?
No, no. Again, the requirement on the school report card's really just going to be the top line and the expenditures. The data that we've presented, and again, we're, you know, this is draft form and we're open to ideas or suggestions, but these were sort of the pieces that really jumped out to us as, hey, these are what are going to trigger some of these big differences across our schools. So as Jay said, as we work through it, we may identify that there's a piece or two that's not on this draft that is maybe causing a difference or two across some other schools. But at least on the first kind of go-around, so to speak, these are the pieces that we think really drive some of those differences.
As we work with Janet, we might find out that we need to put some type of dashboard together that makes more sense with some bars and some graphs or whatever instead of just the numbers like this. But, you know, if you put the numbers up there, but you don't tell the story somehow, it's, a lot of people are going to gloss over it and not understand it at all. So can I just say also, we met with the principals, did this presentation to them. They understood it, they liked it, we gave them their data and they said, makes perfect sense to us. So the people who are in the buildings are going to be able to explain it really well.
Mark, can I ask Mr. Carubis?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I stepped out of the room, so I might have missed this. The next phase is student-based reporting. Does that sound right? Where we've done site-based reporting, now are we going to have to report our data based on the students? So not, it costs X amount of dollars to teach my kid, but break it down into the populations, our subcategories that we monitor so that we end up saying that we spend X amount of dollars on low-income kids, X amount of dollars on gifted kids? Yeah.
Not at this point. That is not a part of it.
Thank you.
Mark?
Don't give him any answers.
What, you know, I want to know how much they spend on my kid.
A lot.
That's true.
Can we go back and do this so I can figure out exactly how much you spent on my kid?
Mr. Eisen?
Back to the other question that was asked as far as going forward with this data and stuff like that. I'm assuming we are in the process, or Forecast Five is in the process of also making this available at the building level so they can just input their numbers and boom, it just, as they get a new teacher, it calculates salary and then it calculates that dollar amount and then?
Well, they'll be working with us on it. Yeah, we actually upscaled the Forecast Five Plus, which is the program that gives us the ability to do this in real time.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be able to do real-time or monthly or quarterly reporting on this site-based analysis just based on when building out the platform. So it will be, it will be something we can monitor throughout the year and it'll probably be a good exercise to check it, you know, maybe this time every year to see where we're at and, again, identify any trends or issues that we either have to work on communicating out or possibly remedying if there's an outlier that doesn't really have a story to it.
And then just a quick statement, another question. The Forecast Five is listening, we expect a discount. No. But the other question is, this is just essentially breaking down the information we already knew. It's just breaking down the operating expenses per pupil at a site level. So kind of relating to another question that was asked as far as what do we anticipate to learn? Do we anticipate to learn or could you essentially envision learning anything from looking at other districts' data as they break down their operating expenses per pupil?
Yes.
Like, I mean, anything specific that you want to talk about now or just come to us later? I'm just curious what we could learn.
Sure. Some of that data is through five share and five site has been already disseminated and is available. And you can look at why we're a Tier Two district and why another district's a Tier Four district. And you can look at how many principals per student they have, how many reading improvement teachers per pupil, reading improvement student they have. And you can really, you know, look at the bar graph and go, okay, well...
So you're seeing more than just the top line?
It's a different program, but all of that's available.
Okay. Good. It's good to know.
Any other questions or comments?
I have just a couple of questions about the salaries that are included. These teacher salaries, but I assumed it was the administration salaries are in this average too?
Yeah, what we've presented there, I believe, is just teacher salaries. So it excludes building administration. The FTE number is all staff, so it includes teachers as well as administrators as well as our classified staff located at that building.
Okay. And then so district level is not included and it's not like shared across?
Right. So district-level administration would be part of that centralized cost per pupil that's assigned there, but there wouldn't be an FTE assigned to it. It would just be an expense. Some of the other major centralized expenses that are included in that kind of middle column are like our building operations and maintenance and our transportation. As Jay mentioned earlier, we determine allocation basis to give each of those buildings a portion of that expense, but because that's managed centrally, that's considered a centralized expense.
Okay, so maybe I'm not understanding. So the principal's salary is not included?
The salary would be included as a site-level salary, that the FTE number that's included in the data, we don't have that there, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anything else?
I'm just happy that nothing popped up that said, whoa, something's wrong here. I mean, that's really good news. Awesome.
Thank you, gentlemen. Your board update. Dr. Sullivan alluded to our snow days. Perhaps, much to the chagrin of our students, but not our parents and not our staff who probably don't want to go to school until July, we were able to open on Friday. And I just want, on behalf of the board, to thank everyone that made that happen. And I know for a fact, that did not happen by pure luck or by chance. It took many staff and many people to do behind-the-scenes work in order that our school was able to open on Friday. You know Ron Johnson, right? He was at first student, helping start buses to make sure that they were running. You know, Ron, probably Jay and Dr. Sullivan were making sure that the right grade of gas, not summer gas, winter gas, was in the buses in order that they would start on Friday. Our custodial staff was extremely busy, making sure that our buildings were in good shape, that the heat was on and the pipes weren't leaking. So we had a concerted effort on the part of a lot of people, and sometimes you just think stuff happens magically, and it really is not a rabbit out of the hat. It's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes on the part of the central office staff, on part of everyone to make sure school opened. So on behalf of the board, I want to thank, on behalf of our parents and our staff, I'm not so sure about the kids, that school was able to open. So thank you very much. The Legislative Education Network of DuPage and District 200, District 204 and District 203 had separate legislative breakfasts since their last meeting. They had an opportunity to talk to legislators from DuPage County and then our local legislators that expand beyond DuPage County to talk about a number of issues that school districts face. to talk about a number of issues that school districts face on a daily basis. Some of the things they talked about was the instructional school day, length of a school day. It's in the paper lately, and how many hours, but not, hours are not as important as other things that we might be doing, like computer learning, online learning, internships. So superintendents and board members were lobbying our legislators to try to help them understand those issues. School safety was a major issue that was addressed with the legislators. Dual credit was also addressed. And the salary increase and penalty that's associated with particular salary increases and some of the loopholes in that legislation were also addressed. So we had a great opportunity. I was able to attend both. Many people did attend the breakfast, and I thought there was a great understanding that occurred. Those are great events. I thank 203 and 204 for joining us. We actually joined 203 and 200 to have that activity, and I think it's a very useful activity. That's all I have. Do you have a report?
Yeah, so Susan and I are working on advancing an equity policy. We've made some significant traction on both of our fronts. I think we need to come together. We don't have, we're not ready to share it with the board or do a presentation yet. We wanna get to the point where we are, we're comfortable bringing it to you guys before. Obviously, it's gonna be a board decision, but we're doing a lot of the background work so that we have something for prime time. That's it.
Any other-
Susan, you wanna add anything on that?
I think you've got it.
Any other comments, questions?
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.